All right, so we call the select board meeting for Wednesday, September 15th, 2021 to order. In attendance is David Phil, Joyce Chunglo, John Woskevitz, Jane Nevin Smith, and Amy Parsons. And the meeting is being recorded as well as streamed on Hadley Media. And all votes will be taken via roll call. Consent agenda, we have warrants AP 2210S, AP 2210, AP 2209V, PR 2205, AP 2209, AP 2209S, AP 2208A. This is AP P 208S, I'm not sure if that's right. Minutes from August 4th, 2021, and that's it.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Joyce, second by Jane, and any discussion on this? Jennifer, roll call.
Roll call vote Phil.
Yes.
Nevin Smith.
Yes.
Chunglo.
Yes.
Woskevitz.
Yes.
And Parsons.
Yes.
Thank you.
Jennifer, was the resident that was trying to get on, were they trying to do public comments or?
They wanted to do public comments, he's tried a couple of times. But what we're gonna do is, at the next meeting, I've invited him to join me here at Town Hall, and he can do his public comment from there, and he said that that was fine for him.
Okay, so then we'll go ahead and move to 3.1, public comments, we'll limit it to 15 minutes, please limit it to three minutes each, so everyone has a turn, anybody here for public comments?
David.
Randy.
Just wanna throw out anything relative to town meeting coming up? I know Carolyn sent me an email today or text regarding the potential different times to do it, so just make everybody aware that it appears that most towns that are having fall town meetings are doing them outdoors, from what I can tell, based on information I'm getting from Mass Moderators Association. So just wanna let you guys know that, and so we can make a decision that makes sense, and I'm sure Board of Health will help us do that when the time comes.
I would like to also make sure, Randy, that the our fire department and everyone else, DPW, has enough time to get things together, because I know that they're actually planning on inside, unless we determine otherwise, so let's get that decision made as soon as possible.
Yes, I agree with that 100%, I believe we're having a meeting on the 20th to discuss that town meeting, and hopefully we can make a decision then.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah, we'll just go with the flow, whatever you guys decide, we'll go with it.
Well, it's you guys that decide.
Well, the 20th is on Monday.
Yes.
Yeah, so I didn't know we had a meeting on Monday, who's doing the meeting?
Unified Command Meeting.
Okay, well then you guys will decide.
We'll talk about it then, and then push it back to the select board, I guess.
Okay, well, there is not, there is not a meeting that week, and we're looking at, what, for October? What's the date?
Do, so I was gonna bring all of the details up in discussions and what's gonna be coming up at the next meeting with Unified, do you want me to talk about it now? Or would you like, I was gonna do it at Town Administrator Report?
Yeah, let me just do, Randy, do you have any other public comments?
No, sir, that's it.
All right, thanks, anybody else for public comments before we move on to more town meeting stuff? No? Okay, all right, Carolyn, you want to do your administrators' report, and then we can move on to more town meeting?
Yep, so I'm gonna talk about ribbon cutting first, I did send out the disappointment that that date that we've been working on with the Governor and Lieutenant Governor is not gonna work out, so the Lieutenant Governor is available on the September 30th at 10 o'clock, so we are moving forward with that, we've adjusted the invitations, and all those that we're going to be speaking are going to be speaking. Uploaded, there should be a program schedule, so you can see who will be speaking, it's a very tight schedule, but it's, I think it's gonna work out fine, we're still working out some of the logistics, but it will begin at the library in Senior Center. The library's front lawn is gonna be having some work done on it, so we'll move a little bit more towards the Senior Center, but we'll be working on that, and so you can just see what that program schedule is like. The other thing, the town meeting, I'll go into a little bit of details about that, I have, I'll share more of that information at Unified Command about the feedback I had gotten from our Town Council, a little bit different, as far as how many are doing it inside and outside, but we'll share that, we'll discuss that at Unified Command. So what we're, what we're looking at is, because of the schedule and all of the meetings and the public forum that has to take place, closing the warrant, signing the warrant, we can still work out our present schedule if, whatever we come to decide, whether it's October 24st, first at 7 o'clock, inside the high school, or the other two options that I'm looking at are Saturday the 16th, which is the Saturday before, or Saturday the 23rd, which would be outside and still discussions about versus outside on the fields at the high school, or at the public safety, I know there were concerns about the public safety, it was, there was wind there, and there was a sound issue, I think the sound issue could definitely be resolved, but we would, it's always that risk where it's gonna be windy at that public safety or at at the high school, but we'll be talking about that, because as Joyce said, it does impact DPW and public safety personnel as well, so we're looking at all those options, but we will have recommendations from Dr. Mosler and Randy and everyone, Mike Spankable, as well as the Chair is at the Unified Command, so we'll make, bring those recommendations to the next meeting. Because of those schedules, I do need to add September 29th, and my understanding is that you guys are used to having an extra meeting before these town meetings, so I need to add a select board meeting on September 29th, and the public forum will be on October 13th, so it is different versus the first and the third. We can skip the, I think it was the 6th, which is typically your first meeting of the month, but I don't wanna have you guys be meeting, meted out, if that's, if that's the right word, so just to note that, but I will send you a reminder of that as well. I did, as I, I sent you all an email, I forwarded you an email from our Town Council regarding North Hadley Villatall. It just came in, so I wasn't able to have a meeting, because we had to post an executive session 48 hours in advance, but I know that you are all looking for an update, so they, it has been busy behind the scenes, so if you could just read that email, and I will post an executive session for our next meeting to discuss.
Is the executive session gonna be both for that and the other one for discussion?
I can talk with you after, John, I'm not sure what the other one is, so we can talk about it, there's probably gonna be a couple of things we'll be talking about in the executive session at the next meeting.
Okay.
And Carolyn, when we, when it comes around to budget time, we know we have extra meetings to do, so don't ever feel bad saying, hey, we need to have a meeting next week, cuz you know, that's what we're here for, so if you need a meeting, we're here, so
Okay.
Just let us know.
Thank you.
With Zoom, it's much easier anyways, so.
It is, it is.
No, you work every day, we can work once a week, there's not a problem.
Yeah. Thanks, John. And that's it, that's all I have.
We got, we got that on record, what John just said?
Yeah, there you go, Carolyn, any, anything on your end of it, though, from your report about people were asking, just to reiterate, what the timeline will be for the Route 9 disaster happening? Why, I, why, I would like to ask DOT, what in God's name, what were they thinking doing the bridge at the start of the opening of schools? I don't think they have a brain, I don't think they have a brain in their head over there, I'll tell you.
Yeah, UMass did not receive anything, and I don't think the communities did as well. So, I mean, I, I don't come that way, I don't know how it's been for you guys going over the bridge or coming back over the bridge in the morning or at rush hours, I don't know how it's been, I go backroads.
Well, in the evening, in the evening is horrific. I don't go that way.
Every day.
Yeah. Yeah, going, oh, going west, it backs up almost to West Street.
Yeah, and they have, they haven't even worked on it now for the last three days, I can tell you that right now.
Though, Joyce, they, what I was told is that DOT told people it was emergency work that had to be done right now and could not wait, because it was emergencies, but apparently they've known about this emergency for at least six months and haven't acted on it until the weekend before the students came back.
Absolutely.
About their timeline and their planning.
Yes, yes, fabulous DOT, yes. So our Route 9 project, that is scheduled to begin date.
So I have not heard anything different, but there, they gave the advertising date supposedly was September 11th. So I have not, I've not seen anything, or whether I would be seeing it or not, and it was still, still the plans were late winter, early spring before construction would begin, so they have to advertise for contractors and all of that.
So that'll be 22.
Yeah, but you know what, I will reach out and see if I can get, if there's any changes for the next select board meeting.
Between that, Carolyn, and Bay Road Project, just where are we going? We just need to be sure we're all on the same page and not have them slip us something.
So on that topic, I did have a couple of questions of whether things had been delayed or held up because of conservation, and my understanding is that was all approved on time, on schedule, Janice helped with that before she left.
Yes.
And so that process went pretty seamlessly. So it looks like any delays or slowdowns right now will be because of their advertising and bid process, but I haven't heard anything.
And a thank you to Janice for doing that, we appreciate it.
Anything else, Carolyn?
Nope, that's it.
All right, then let's, we have a hearing at, or yeah, a hearing at 6:30, so we gotta wait for that. Let's jump down to 6.1, is, is it Melanson, is that how you say it?
Melanson, yeah.
Carolyn and Linda, take it away.
Yep, I will, I'll start, and I can give you, because I have only worked a year today, I haven't had as much history, but Linda certainly will support why this is a good decision. Melanson is who we contract out for accounting services, and we also contracted out up until recently with someone who did accounting services for Hadley, and Linda, again, has the history, she'll go into the details of the benefit of this, and it has worked out wonderful, having Mary and Lori from Melanson working together. And Mary recently was hired by Melanson, so that contract that we had directly with Mary, we won't have that any longer, but there will be that added cost, plus an additional cost will be added to the Melanson contract, because she's joining them, still working together. Lori is gonna start being here every month, so we have had a very good relationship with Melanson, and I always say this from my past history, working with in-house accountants, that the responses that we get from Melanson are very quick and outstanding and work really well together. So Linda, if you could just give a little history of the past, Mary and that really good coordination relationship.
This is Mary Erickson, who was originally with us through, when we had Justin Cole's firm, Bay State Municipal Accounting, and so Mary's been the one constant in this whole changeover that we've had since we had Bay State, and then they left, and we had a gap for a couple of months, and Mary hopped over and helped us out with that. We then went with Ken Sheriff's Firm for several months, and we this was, we kept Mary doing our, doing the warrants each week and processing accounts payable, and tried to get with Ken Sheriff them, just doing the higher level accounting, but they really wanted the whole thing, it was part of what the trouble we had with them anyways, we, we lost them. We also were, were working with them through PVPC, so we were paying Ken Sheriff, and we were paying PVPC, and I think between the two of them, we were pretty close to $90,000, if not more with PVPC, I can't remember. But then, you know, we've had Melanson for a long time, Melanson Heath, as our auditors, and when they decided to go into the accounting business a couple of years ago, they weren't quite ready when we were looking for a new accountant, but they did, they had about a year or two under their belts when we picked them up last year, and they were very willing to work with Mary, they liked, they liked that concept, and we wanted to keep Mary, and then we all entered COVID, and we knew that our arrangement with Mary Erickson was only going to last as long as she didn't have another job, and so we benefited under COVID, because she wanted to, she was hunkering down and staying home, and not, not leaving, and staying quite quietly with her family. But we knew it was, it was finite, and she did indeed get another job, but the benefit is, we don't actually have to lose her, because she's working for Melanson, and so we, we went all around, except for the fact that the price goes up a bit, so I'll tell you, I'll explain that. Their, Melanson's increased, then they went from $60,000 to, they increased it by $28,000, or for this year, 24 is prorated. We had budgeted for 15 for Mary, so the actual increase in us for, for us in this current fiscal year is, is $12,000, and the increase next year will be $13,000, and we're still, the total is still not what we were paying Ken Sheriff and PVPC two years ago, so you know, we, we had, we had a great arrangement, and it was and it worked out for us financially very well for a couple of years, though we knew it was going to end, and it's, it's transitioned fairly well, so I do recommend that we stay with them, and we sign this, and we get right on board. If anyone wants to, if we are at a point where we want to go out to bid, and I know some of you keep, do mention from time to time about looking for someone to hire, I suggest that for a later point. It's something to discuss, but we have, we've been very happy, and as Carolyn said, their responsiveness is amazing. That, it's, it's, we hear back, and department heads hear back from them just about as quickly as if you were calling someone over in Town Hall, or trying to walk down the hall and get them. So here we are, and they sent a change order, which is what we're asking that, Carolyn, you want, we want to, we're asking them to sign that, or to approve it tonight and come in for signatures, and take care of it as of September 1, going to the new rate, and
Does the $28,000 increase cover, is that Mary's increase built in there as well, or is that just Melanson's increase?
We're just hiring Melanson, it would be the same as if I hired somebody else, or if Mary went to another firm, the fact that she's there is just, is really not, not related to the contract, although she is going to continue to be dedicated to Hadley. She's also taking on a few other towns, so she's, she's gonna be busy. So this is, is just the Melanson increase, and, and then we don't have, then we aren't paying Mary anymore. So that's why we had 15 for her, so we have a net increase of $12,000 between the two, and Mary's off the, off the contract.
Okay, I was just wondering if Mary was a separate charge on top of that, but it's all in one, so, okay, perfect.
Motion to accept Melanson's contract for this, is it one-year contract? Linda?
It is, it's for, it's actually for the rest of this fiscal year.
For the rest of this fiscal year?
Yes, and then we'll, I'm gonna check their basic contract, I think it was just for the year two.
If I could get a second on that, and then Jane had something.
I'll second that.
And by Amy and Gajen.
Question, a question, can they be our accountant and our auditor, or do we have to find a different?
We do, we do have a different auditor now, as of, as soon as Melanson started, we switched over to Powers and Sullivan. So, and they were the ones, Jane, he was here, Todd Jerseyk was here about a month ago. I don't know if you were at that meeting, so he presented the audit for FY '20. So we are getting an earlier start this year, we are continuing with them, that, because I think we had a two- or three-year contract with them. They presented the 20 audit about a month ago, and we're getting going on the 21 audit, it starts first week in October, so hopefully it won't be as late as the huckus next year, when, when you get this year's audit. So it should go better this time.
Things were different.
In many ways.
Okay, any other discussion on that? Jennifer, roll call.
Roll call vote Phil.
Yes.
Nevin Smith.
Yes.
Chunglo.
He's disappeared.
Gone. Hold on one sec.
Yes.
Yes.
There, sorry, Woskevitz.
Yes.
Parsons.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right, we got a, thank you, Linda, for that. All right, and then anything else while you're here with us? Yeah, all right.
Is Joyce back on?
Yes.
I think so.
She's been on, her picture's gone, is what it is.
Okay. We've got just a few minutes, so why don't we jump down to 7.1, Bylaw Committee? And Carolyn, do you wanna give a quick little summary of what this is and the two-week announcement?
Sure, just a reminder that I had asked or recommended that the town bylaws be reviewed, and that it is a long process, typically it's one, a one-to-two-year project, so what I had just recommended at the last select board meeting, but I told you I would come with some suggestions of either departments, and they would, they would ask somebody from their department or board to take part in that committee, as well as I do think it would, my suggestion would be that the, that the select board advertise for at least two residents in the community to be involved with it as well. So my recommendation would be to have somebody from Planning, Building Inspections, the Clerk's Office, Jessica, both the Police and Fire Department, Board of Health, Conservation, ZBA, and those would be my recommendations that are typically involved with bylaw committees, but you may have another department that you'd like to add to it, but I would recommend, maybe for a couple of weeks, advertise for anybody interested in participating in the bylaw committee.
Yeah, we've been trying to do 14-day, you know, two weeks, basically, for an announcement to get allow people to have time to go get letters to Jennifer. So when is our next meeting? Is it two weeks from now?
One.
Oh, one, okay.
One.
Oh, we just added one, I forgot, so, all right.
So it gives us three weeks.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So let's put that out there, and if you're interested, we'll, we'll probably do two, two members of the community. Does that sound reasonable? Yeah, okay, all right, so anybody that's watching, if you'd like to be on the bylaw committee, send a letter to, or an email to Jennifer, and the point is to kind of streamline this, get rid of bylaws that are, you know, talking about courses tied up on the common from the, you know, 1800s, and also update things, so that way they have modern language and references, and that we can put more of these bylaws online. We have some of our bylaws online in the electronic system, but there's a lot of stuff that can use updating. Anything else on that, Karen?
Nope, that's it.
Okay.
We got
Boards are available for help. TV 5, Cable 5.
I'm sorry.
Didn't hear that, John.
I didn't hear you, John.
More input from the public, we've got other boards that are still have vacant positions.
I'm gonna bait, John, I'm gonna put together my recruiting list for town meeting, and it'll have the little sheets I pass out with all the openings, asking people to volunteer for their town. So I'll put, I'll put that back together.
We also, we also related to Conservation, since Edwin Matusko has resigned from his at-large committee position on CPA, and is now the delegate from Conservation, we have an open position there. Will that be on your list?
Well, it hasn't been presented to the select board yet for y'all to vote on it, because it wasn't received until today. So I was, I had it to go on to your next agenda, and for y'all to advertise it then, which is the correct thing to do. Okay.
Just didn't wanna lose it.
I, trust me, I'm all over it.
We, we can't lose positions, they're there.
Yeah, and we'll put that one out for two weeks as well, give people a chance to get their letters of interest in, so. All right, I show 6:30, and it looks like Scott from Happier Valley Comedy is here.
Hello.
Hi, Scott.
How are you?
Good, how's it going?
Good.
All right, so this is, Jennifer, why don't you introduce what we're doing?
Absolutely, so this is Scott Gregman from Happier Valley Comedy, and they are looking to take a general on-premise all alcohol license. Their former next-door neighbors are no longer in business, and they were in the taproom, and, and so they're in the Mill Valley Suites there, and Happier Valley Comedy would like to take over the taproom premise to have a location to serve their audiences, class participants, and stuff for their shows and such, so they're coming before this, look forward to ask for a license. Before y'all talk to Scott, I'll just say, Building Inspector, Fire Chief, and Police Chief have all reviewed the license, all are okay with it. Tommy and Mike, of course, will have to go out and do inspections, but everybody does approve the application. So Scott, do you maybe wanna talk a little bit about what you would like to do?
Sure, yeah. Circumstances worked out beneficially, where we made it through the pandemic in good shape, and we have always had a community that's slightly larger than our current space, and so the space next to us was vacant, and the landlord likes us and trusts us, and wanted to make it easy for us to get in there, so we have signed a lease, and we're using it currently as a third space for rehearsals and classes, and once we have shows going again, which will be when it feels a little safer for everybody to gather, we'll be using it as our box office and a little lobby and bar area before and after shows on Saturday nights. And eventually, we may open it on other nights as well, but current plans is really just Saturday night service, and other nights would just be used as a rehearsal space.
Did they leave the bar and everything in there, or did they, yeah, so that's all in place already?
Yep, everything's in there, and that's, that's written into our lease, the use of all the equipment in there, and there's so much equipment, it's actually, we're not gonna use some of it, but everything we need is there.
Well, that's good.
Yeah.
And there's gonna be a doorway between the two suites over there connecting, or no, they have to go outside?
Yeah, no, the way that everything's built right now, there's no, no good way to directly connect the spaces, so the liquor license is just for that suite C, formerly taproom space.
Okay.
And so it's a wine and beer, or all alcohol?
It's, you wanna speak?
Yeah, it's all alcohol, because this is one of your special legislation licenses that is tied to the location, so it's an all alcohol license.
Okay. I'll, the motion to accept this, I wish him well in his business, and hope things go well, and things start to open up a little bit more, we can, I'll keep our fingers crossed on that, because we don't know how it's going, but you got my vote on that to make a motion for it.
A second.
All right, motion by Joyce, second by Jane, any other discussion on this license approval? Jennifer, roll call.
Roll call vote Phil.
Yes.
Nevin Smith.
Yes.
Chunglo.
Yes.
Woskevitz.
Yes.
Parsons.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Scott, is there anything else? You also have your common vicular license. And they're gonna take a common vicular license out to go with their liquor license request, so could I ask y'all to approve the common vicular as well?
So moved.
All right, motion by Joyce, second by Jane, Jennifer, you have something?
Nope, I want a roll call.
Okay.
Roll call, Phil.
Yes.
Nevin Smith.
Yes.
Chunglo.
Yes.
Woskevitz.
Yes.
Parsons.
Yes.
Okay.
All right, congrats, Scott, and good luck with the expansion.
Thank you, I think the only other thing was to request that the liquor license fee be prorated for the end of the year, since we're in September.
That's, that's fine with me, I think we've done it in the past for other people, so I would make a motion to prorate the liquor license till the end of the year, and then go to the full price beginning in January. That's a motion.
Second.
Motion by Joyce, second by Jane, and anything on that? Jennifer?
Roll call vote Phil.
Yes.
Nevin Smith.
Yes.
Chunglo.
Yes.
Woskevitz.
Yes.
And Parsons.
Yes.
Yes.
I will let you know that the ABCC is running a little slow, they're, they're moving faster than they were. So it will be pretty late in the year probably before they get their license, so. Um, but we're gonna, we're gonna move as fast as we can for them.
Thank you all.
All right, thanks Scott, have a good night.
Good luck too.
Thank you.
All right, uh, before we go to special town meeting, before I forget, Diana from the Hatfield Select Board has asked me if any of the select board members would be able to attend their ceremonial river crossing reenactment on Saturday at ten forty-five.
This Saturday?
Yep, so i- if you're interested, um, and you'd like to do that, get in touch with me tomorrow probably or, or call Diana over in, in Hatfield for details. Um, it's going to go from uh, the trail at the end of Huntington Road across, across the river in a, I think a homemade boat. So it should be interesting.
Are they asking us to go in the boat or just to be there on the shore cheering?
So you missed the boat on volunteering to go in the boat. They uh, that, I think Linda Hannam, I believe is in the boat rowing. They wanted, they wanted people with rowing experience to, to help them row. We will have our fire department, I believe, on their boat just in case anything happens in the crossing down river. But um, I think they have volunteers from Hatfield and some from Hadley to actually row the boat across the river.
I wish we had Gloria DeFavio get in that boat from our former select woman and her partner. So, but it sounds great, I, I'm not in towns, I would have loved to been there.
But, but if you can go ten forty-five or so and if you have any questions, contact Diana or, or myself, so.
That's, and that's Diana's, I know, so you have to say, yes.
Yep. Um, okay, so I think the last thing we have is seven point two town meeting warrant, special town meeting warrant. Carolyn, do you want to?
Sure. Linda, Linda and I will both go over it, but I'll start with a few of the things, a lot of it you have already seen, but we continue to uh, work diligently to um, clean it up and take out what, what may need to be taken out and just be a little bit more specific as well as um, capitals, capital committee has met, finance committee is meeting as well as um, community preservation. So we're getting closer to, to some more accurate numbers. You'll see, um, I don't know Linda, do you want to put that up or would that be easier? I, I could share. What do you think David, you want that up on the screen?
Yeah, I think it'd be helpful and especially for people watching at home.
Okay, all right, because we have a lot more uh, numbers and items now, so let's see. And in color, which is so helpful. Okay. So the first article is the uh, omnibus budget, the general fund and it's to amend the fiscal year twenty twenty-two. Some of those things we have gone over, I'm going to go over some of the more organizational changes that will have a financial impact such as the select board salaries. If you remember real, real briefly, uh, we are, we recognized a need for some support for some of the boards and committees and some of the staff here for some clerical assistance. And um, so that is included right there, we're still working on those numbers because we're waiting for Deborah to get back from the time that she had already had um, planned to take off our HR person. She's going to help us hone in, get some job descriptions a little bit more specific based on what the needs are and uh, spend some more time on that, so those numbers will continue to get closer to what they're going to be. The town accountant, Linda explained to you what that change is going to be. Conservation commission, uh, we are still in the middle. We do um, have some discussions with a neighbor in town to possibly share a position. So we are still working on that, what that number may look like and what that position may look like. Police, I'm going to let Linda talk about the uh, the cruiser versus the purchasing. Um, I am going to talk about the building, I did talk about this before, building inspection salaries. That's really just a cleanup from how it's getting funded. It's not an increase, it's just how it's getting funded and how we're going to work out that other, uh, the select board salary changes. And then high race, highway salaries, I explained uh, la- at the last meeting that we had cut down to one and a half staffing positions for administrative support at DPW. Definitely finding that's, that it's not enough, it really needs two full-time position, positions. So that, but that, that's what that is uh, reflects. And um, so Linda, I'm going to ask you to do the police cruiser and then uh, highway expenses, the debt and the OPEB. Right, we have three items on here uh, that relate to uh, capital planning really and helping with our capital planning. The first one is the cruiser, uh, the police have, uh, Chief Mason have put a sixty-five thousand dollar cruiser in the capital plan as he uh, generally does from year to year. Because uh, the, the capital planning committee is, seems, I, I don't want to speak for them except though, you, you, you'll correct me David. But um, the general consensus is that we're going to try and keep the, they are going to try and keep the items on the fall town meeting limited within um, what can be borrowed within the levy and uh, that understand and not putting any debt exclusion overrides forward, which means they're trying to get as much off of that as they can. Very appropriately moved off is a, is if, if they lease instead of uh, purchase a um, a cruiser and there are many other benefits for it and I don't want to get into the detail of that tonight until the capital planning committee is voted until, and the uh, police chief can speak to himself for himself. But um, increasing that budget uh, in order to accommodate a lease seems like a really good way to go from here forward. The other capital item, ditch funding, we're not going to ditch their funding, this is about funding for the ditches. There had been a hundred thousand dollar item um, funded before in, in capital. And then they said from there on they can maintain very similar to the cruiser then. This is an item that probably should be in the highway budget anyways. And if we increase their, increase their budget by about twenty thousand dollars and continue that from year to year, similar to them taking care of trees and paving and very, various other content, ongoing maintenance items, it can be accommodated within the budget and then they won't be competing for um, capital uh, capital funding dollars um, on the other side. And um, the, the next one for the debt consistent with this, it has been raised and I know the chair is interested in this and they're, and so we're just going to put it in there as a placeholder. It's up to them and the finance committee to, to uh, to uh, make the recommendation and you and the select board. But I put it in there because I think you're closing the warrant tonight that uh, the possibility that if another fifty or a hundred thousand dollars was added to debt, we would be able to um, do more in borrowing within the levy in order to cover more of these capital costs that are coming before the board. So uh, that wraps up the capital part. You, you'll always see me putting OPEB funding back in there, that's, that's up to discussion. I don't, you're not going to make any votes tonight, but that would be if you um, if you put the full, uh, the funding for OPEB back in, that would be two hundred and seventy-seven thousand. The total increase to the budget then would be four hundred and forty-three um, thousand to cover all of these. And I think everything that isn't uh, everything but the last two, they come in at less than a hundred thousand. This was not, Carolyn did not open this up as uh, as anyone have changes in their budget. There's, there's an ongoing theme on here of taking care of the staff support needs and then the, the capital changes. And OPEB.
Linda's a hundred percent right as far as the debt exclusion, although the capital committee has not voted yet. I think we're in, in two weeks. The consensus or the general feeling of the committee is that we uh, are probably not going to recommend that would require a debt exclusion or an override vote, so.
Hey Linda? At one time um, DPW were, was looking into leasing the uh, dump trucks. I don't know if that's still available or not or an option, that maybe uh, finance and uh, capital can consider.
Yeah, we had, well, um, we have, they have taken a number of things off of their capital list for this year, but it's certainly worth discussing if there are, uh, if there are similar items, similar changes that can be made there. Um, yeah, feel free to bring it up or mention it. We have talked about leasing or renting in a couple of cases. Again, when we get there, we'll talk about the role and, and there are reasons they don't want to do that. But um, but yeah, actually only two years ago are the last few times that the police looked at the, the cruisers. It was not feasible to be leasing and things have changed. So things do change from year to year and we have to uh, we look at, yeah, look, we look at, uh, see, but see what's changed in the business world, see what's changed in the financial situations. And uh, in the case of the police, I think that the fact that they went to these, that um, uh, they got out away from the Crown Victorias and went to this new uh, what are they, the SUVs? That they're lasting better and, and the, the lease arrangements are um, are better. So, yeah, I, it's always, even if it's shot down one year, John, it's always worth bringing it up again and seeing if things have changed. Move on Carolyn or? Sure, yep. Mr. Stuff. This would be uh, fixing the, uh, this is just to fix the funding once we settle on the amount of that increase. Um, Article two is the, the enterprise fund portion of the budget. There are no changes to their budget, but there would be needs to be some changes to the funding of it to allow for reserves uh, to come in and be used. These are a higher level of reserves than maybe, may ultimately be necessary because um, we need to use FY twenty-one revenues to fund FY twenty-two budget for state reporting uh, requirements. And so in order to balance it, it has reserves, but we're hoping that the revenue, we're expecting, I'm expecting that the revenue will go up, but I don't know, maybe it won't, but we'll have to keep revisiting that issue. Um. You want me to keep going Carolyn? You're on a roll, go ahead. Prior year bills, we don't have any, but if one pops up between now and town meeting, we've got the place to put it. So hopefully that will come right out. Cash transfers, I think you remember a couple of years ago, we had the right to farm signs. They came in three hundred and seventy-five dollars higher. The money did get spent and we have to sort of fill in that hole, so uh, add, add a free cash, we should have free cash so that we can uh, fully fund that, that uh, the article to what it actually cost. And. Carolyn? Sure, yeah, so I, I, I have to say um, we've been working really hard to look at past projects that either are, haven't been completed, started or there's leftover balances. And, and Linda has done a tremendous job um, working with Lori to look at some um, leftover small balances. So these are some things that we're still waiting to get some more feedback from department heads. But we would, we are looking to try to address some of the things that aren't completed or uh, or still have a leftover balance to see what else work needs to be done for those articles. So we'll, again, we'll have more information on that um, a- as well as with CPA to see what, if, if they need to clean up those articles as well. And then I, I wish Amy Fiden was here because she did an amazing job. It's giving an update after the capital meeting um, on all of these capital articles. So these are still in requests, these are requested. Um, as Linda mentioned, there are some, um, if you look at in the red that will probably be dropped or postponed into the annual town meeting. So again, these still need to get approved by capital in the finance committee. But as you can see, um, we are, there's some larger items there that we are going to wait for the annual or um, look to see some alternative ways to address the issue. And we can, if you, if you want to go over any of those, uh, we can answer any questions you have. Right, these are technically all still on the table and the red ones are likely um, likely to drop, does that, does that seem right to you David, we picked on the right ones?
Yeah, um, we, we have what, three hundred thousand roughly in order uh, worth of stuff we could spend on capital?
That, that we can spend and we usually vote, uh, or we usually uh, the committee approves a higher amount than that because not everything goes through as you see from our cleanup articles. So it's usually in the three hundred fifty thousand range. And if, if the committees, um, if you all decide that we want to increase that budget, we could then increase in, to another hundred thousand of items. These are, this is too much here right now, but uh, these are the things that are still on the table.
So for people watching at home, that's what the committee's working on is kind of triaging of what's needed now and what can, what can wait.
So Article five is only if, if, if um, back on that list, uh, the gas pumps at DPW are past we being able to replace or fix, so they need to be um, we need to get new pumps and we need to decom- decommission the older pumps. So we're still looking at that on um, you know, other alternatives or waiting until the annual. But if this does get approved and it is the best option to do this, this Article um, five point two is a previous article. There's thirty thousand that was borrowed to repair the DPW gas pumps that we would um, we, we would be using. How do you explain this Linda? Taking that thirty thousand to support that. Yeah, we would be repurposing the repair money in, in, into either purchase, which is, doesn't seem likely at this point, but decision hasn't been made. Or it would be towards, it would go towards, uh, I think they're getting a quote on decommissioning. And I think that we would then gear that thirty thousand towards that cost of uh, whether they have to fill them with sand, remove them or whatever it is to uh, empty those uh, gas pumps out and get them offline.
They'll probably have to be dug up, there's nothing in the way uh, where they will fill those, there's enough room to dig them.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, yeah, I ju- I have no idea what the price is, so that'll be interesting to see what comes in. Linda, you want to do six, Article six? Um, yeah, stabilization fund, um, we, we have used that fund uh, to balance the budget the last couple of years. We also did a return. I think at the last town meeting? On my list here, but yeah, well, we did a return of funds about a hundred eighty-three thousand, but we also borrowed it to, to fund two years worth of budgets. So we are down um, several hundred thousand dollars in that account and each time uh, it's, it's adjusted that we will put that money back. The, a fund is down to about one point three million now. Um, and the goal's always been to maintain at least two million and perhaps get higher than that. So uh, the amount that we would put in there, uh, we should have a really good idea on what we, our, our free cash is. Lo- Lori was going to try and um, try and wrap it up as best she could at the end of this week and she's coming out for the day on Tuesday and we're going to meet with her then too. So we will put an amount in there um, and for you and finance committee to consider for uh, putting back into the stabilization fund um, this fall. Or, or wait till spring, whatever you might want to do, but we'll have, we'll have an idea of what's available to put back into that fund if building it back up again is something that you want to do. And then Article seven, I've mentioned before, is just a uh, a, you know, a logistical thing. We need to the uh, transfer the ownership of the Goodwin Memorial Library from the trustees to uh, the town of Hadley. So uh, town council will be writing that article and that will get more specific after that, after he reviews it and gives us the final copy. And then the CPA articles, these are reserved for CPA, we haven't gotten, um, they still have to meet to give us some more specifics, but we did want to put a placeholder because I am going to ask you to close the warrant tonight. So we just wanted to make sure those items were in there, we don't have any amounts or anything like that at this point. They met earlier this week, um, but they're going to meet again the end of the month. And then we've got a placeholder uh, for a planning board zoning by law change. I think that is the by law change, that's it. That's it? I know. That's it. I think, I think that's it. It's not pages long. I thought it was really almost a placeholder, but you're right, I think it is. All right, and then the mosquito control, I do, I do want to talk to you about that. I, I want to ask that you would, um, even though we closed the warrant today, we, you know, we can still make changes with the law. I, I do, I, I uploaded um, two documents, I think you all got the email in the early summer from Senator Comerford, um, her disappointment that her application to the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs for the mosquito opt-out for the communities that, that chose to opt-out were, uh, there are, many of them were denied. And so she had sent a letter um, asking the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs why and what was the criteria. So there was a response, um, I also included that um, from the Env- Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs. So you have both of those documents.
So you have both of those documents, so I'd ask, ask you the next, the next time we meet, if you would read those two documents and then it would be helpful. You guys did agree to put this on the town warrant for the special meeting, the special town meeting in the spring. You agreed to do that for the fall. And so that's why it's on here, but based on that information, I think would be, I would recommend that you guys read it and discuss it at the next meeting and decide whether you want, if it's appropriate to have that article on the warrant or not.
Carolyn, are we on that list of not opting out and not getting accepted or do you know?
You, you chose, if, if I remember correctly, that the Select Board chose not to submit an application to opt-out.
No, no, I know, I understand that, but are we in a medium or high risk now that we would, we wouldn't, we, our application wouldn't be accepted anyway?
I don't know, I can look into that for the next meeting.
All right. You know, I, I mean, we could still, if, if we have, at election time, we can still put a non-binding question on the ballot also, you know? But that's still not gonna stop the state from not accepting our application if we do apply for.
As I know, they haven't sprayed anything this year, even, even though they refuse to allow the communities to opt-out. As far as I know, they haven't actually sprayed anything in Western Mass at least. Eastern Mass, I believe they have.
So it.
I was watching the Boston News and they are aerial spraying out east right now.
So I'll make, I'll make sure that is an agenda item. I just wanna be careful how much we discuss it right now because it wasn't an agenda item.
Yeah, no, that's, that's fine. You can put it out for next time.
So that is it. So I just need a vote that, for you guys to close the warrant.
Motion to, motion to close the warrant.
Second.
Motion by Joyce, second by Amy. And I don't know, this looks like a relatively brief town, town meeting based on what's on here.
All about money.
Yeah.
And I think that's, it'll be, we really worked hard to make sure it was quick and easy in case we are outside, so that will be very quick.
Yeah.
The buck stops here.
Any other discussion on the closing the warrant?
So moved. Oh, I already said that.
You already did that.
I'm going again.
Roll call.
Jennifer, roll call.
Roll call vote, Phil?
Yes.
Devin Smith?
Yes.
Tungalo?
Yes.
Muskevitz?
Yeah.
And Parsons?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, and I think that's it on the agenda. Do we have anything unanticipated?
I have announcements, but that's next, right?
We'll go right into that, announcements, go ahead.
Oh my gosh, I have so many shout-outs. So as most of you know, the Three County Fair was Labor Day weekend. So I have a bunch of shout-outs. You know, there's a lot of Hadley residents that participate, from volunteers to department heads, to a bunch of exhibitors. Shout-out to the Hawkins Academy Key Club who decorated a bus which looked awesome. That was in the demolition derby on Saturday. Shout-out to Albried Bandits four H Club, which is based out of Hadley that has a bunch of Hadley kids in it. It got second place on Saturday and it also won best decorated. There was a bunch of kids that were exhibitors in the agricultural hall, the exhibit hall, which is like arts and crafts and sewing and all of that. Exhibitors that were in the youth sheep show and the youth swine show, which David, David's daughter was a clover bud. So Cora, she was a clover bud in the youth swine show and she actually won Reserve Grand Champion Showman at the youth swine show, so.
Go Cora, yes.
To a whole bunch of Hadley people for, you know, being part of that and it was a huge success this year. Twenty nineteen was actually a killer year for them. So it looked like it was down like three percent, but in all actuality, it was a phenomenal year and it went off without a hitch. There was no complaints from the health department or anything, so we're really excited to be back, so.
Yay, congratulations, Three County, nice job.
All right, is that it for you?
Sorry, that was like a lot, that was like a whole bunch on this note, a little tiny note. I wrote a whole bunch on here. But yeah, that was my shout-outs.
I have an announcement. You may have noticed as you drive around town at all the entrances to Hadley, there are now signs from the Climate Change Committee that were made by Ms. Duncan's seventh grade class about recycling and keep our town clean.
Nice.
You have to look for them.
Don't, don't trash our town and some, some similar ones. They look pretty good.
They're all different, but they're the same message, yes.
Yeah, I think there's one at the end of Rocky Hill at the intersection.
Yeah, nice. I, I'll just say thank you to the Legion for Chicken to Go this weekend. I believe it was a success for them. Certainly got a little warmer than we anticipated, but again, we never know what the weather is going to bring and little wind and whatnot, then they cook those chickens and everything else and they did a great job, so thank you to the Legion and the people that participated, that not are always Legion members that do support them, so thank you to all of them.
All right.
Anything else? All right.
Motion to adjourn.
All right, motion by Joyce, second by Jane. Jennifer, roll call please.
Roll call vote, Phil?
Yes.
Devin Smith?
Yes.
Tungalo?
Yes.
Muskevitz?
Yes.
And Parsons?
Yes.
And can I ask for all five of you to swing by and see me? I have so many wonderful things for you all to sign. Seriously, come see me, lots of signing. Please.
I will be there.
It's all, it's all laid out really nicely. Thank you.
If you leave it there, can we sign as we come back into town so it'll be on your desk?
Yes. It would be great to have everybody's signatures on a Monday morning so I could get all of these things out like that, please.
Okay, that, that can happen. Thank you Jen.
All right, so we're adjourned. Good night, everybody.
And, and we'll see everybody on the twenty-ninth.
And the thirtieth.
Well, yeah, I was gonna add that, I, for us, it's a Select Board meeting, but again, Jane, too, also that we have all these dedications of our brand-new buildings that we haven't been able to properly acknowledge, even though they have been up and functioning and things have been taking place. But I think it's only proper for all of us to thank everybody that put so much time and effort into these buildings. Let's recognize them at, at this time. So please show up and be there on the thirtieth and be at our dedications and let's do it the right way. Let's do it the Hadley way, where we always appreciate how things turn out, so thank you.